To the Planning Board meeting of August 15th, 2018. I am John Weiss and to my left...
Chairman Robinson.
Pete Pickos.
To my right...
Rachel McManus.
Martha Taylor.
Who is our town planner. If those in the audience want to see what our agenda is tonight, they can go to the website and download it. Our two major issues this evening are that we have continuations of public hearings. One for Parker River Environmental Studies Building for the Governors Academy, and the second for the Site Plan Review Application for Olga Way Drainage Improvements in gravel staging area out on Plum Island. We also have those sandwiched between some administrative issues and other work that we need to get done today. So the first is meeting minutes. What we had sent out was minutes from July 11th, 2018. I have given Martha two comments that she has made changes to. And does anyone else have any other comments on them?
I should probably note those comments.
Why don't you note them?
So on page two, under number three, it begins with the word "fourth," and that should be struck, and it should just say, "A plan has been submitted showing the locations of these." And on page four, the third paragraph, about halfway down, fifth line, sixth line from the bottom, it says, "Starts as gentle slope again steeper near river," and it should say "near the river."
So if we can accept those as changes, can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, yes.
Second?
Second.
Any comments further on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
As amended.
As amended. Martha, your report?
Okay, a few things that are coming up that I've mentioned previously, but are now a little bit more imminent than they were before. The Green ER, the greener group, which wants to make improvements to the upper green, has three draft applications, one for Planning Board Site Plan Review, and that's going to be required both because of the landscaping changes and also they're planning on regrading most of the green south of the pond.
Say that again, they're regrading?
Grading, because it's low water. Actually, the water table's really high, so if...
And I do know that in rainy seasons, it's what? Yeah, okay.
So they're going to be doing that. They're proposing to remove all of the street trees and replace them with a tree called Selkova.
Now, street trees, on what street?
All the way around.
All the way around?
Yeah, that's how I think.
So everything that goes around? I'd have to go back into an inventory myself. I don't really know where most of them are. Most of them are on the extension of Green Street, aren't they?
There are a lot of them on Green Street here, some on High Road as well.
And they want to completely replant with the whole planting plant?
Yes. Most of them are Norway maples.
You mean the proposed ones?
No, the existing ones.
Yeah, because Norway maples have become a persona non grata tree.
Right, right. So they're proposing a tree called Selkova, which is a Japanese elm.
Do we know about its success?
Well, we're going to need to. One thing I did see that it is susceptible to ice damage.
So is the, can I look at it and find it's a Japanese elm?
Japanese elm, Z E L K O V A. And putting sort of flagstones around the pond and to the two monuments, and three bronze cows.
So where did the bronze cows come from?
Well, they, their explanation is that they're sort of making a nod to Newbury's farming heritage and cow raising and all of that.
I thought it was mostly cattle. And if I go back to the history of Governor Dummer, and what did, who was the first one? Richard Dummer, when he first arrived. He had Angus cows, Angus steer.
Steer.
I mean, do you want to be, let's be correct. I don't know. I'm only kidding.
So anyway, they're going to need Site Plan Review. It's in the Water Supply Protection Overlay District, so they're going to need a special permit from the selectmen for that. So we're probably looking at another joint hearing. And also Conservation Commission approval because the pond is a resource area. Date wise, actually, maybe we can talk about this now. They're probably going to submit it on our meeting on the 29th. And Selectmen's meeting on the 28th. So we've looked at a couple of...
Will they submit a explanation or just submit?
You know, they'll submit an explanation. They're a package and they can do a brief explanation, but not a big, you know, not a full presentation. So we're trying to coordinate some dates. Ellen and I contacted Lisa Neede to see what they like to do.
So what approval do they need from the selectmen?
Water Supply's Overlay District Special Permit.
So this case includes cold, its threats are colder temperatures.
I'll be hooking it up right now. So, I mean, Tim hasn't even weighed in on it. But just a little bit on sequence before we get into the dates. The selectmen originally wanted to get some feedback from Tim Historical Commission and a few other Recreation Commission before they signed the applications. But as it turns out, Green ER wants to do this themselves. They're going to give it to the town as a gift, as a donation. Tracey checked with Lisa. That can be done, but the town can essentially have no say in what they do other than the normal affirmative process that's required by law.
So when they say that, they then can do that without billing wage?
No, but actually, that's the interesting thing. They, we don't have to put it out to bid, but they do have to follow every evaluation. So...
I think I remember something in the back of my, it says this in my mind, that they need to do.
So they would have to go through Site Plan Review, but not necessarily Design Review?
Right, insofar as the board has some latitude of design review.
I mean, we exercise Designer Review if we think we want to do it and we think we can do it, working with the applicant. And the applicant is willing to work with us.
But there is concern from the Historical Commission that potential impact of the project on its status as a contributor factor to the National Registering Historic District, which it's right on the bottom. We need to get Tim's input on the trees.
So I ask you this, I think when you first brought this to my attention, and I still need to ask it. What's the funding source?
If they're donating it, it's their, they form a file on C3, so there are certain donations.
So...
But I think you also brought up the question of bank interest long term.
Yeah, but the first is, so they assume they'll have enough money to do the improvements on the road?
Right.
And have they prepared a financial plan that shows how that will be done?
Not that I've seen.
So we could ask them that? And then also on maintenance, that they do it or the town does it? There's a lot of precedents. Of course, the city of Newbury, which has come through this, where packets in common and all these others have been maintained quite nicely. But now the city is getting involved and there's lots of complaints about how these things have been maintained. So that's been my experience as well. Like the Boston Public Garden is marvelous because it's maintained by a separate group from the city of Boston. And my guess is the same will be true here, but I guess we need to find out what they have in mind. So that's interesting.
They might be cattle. Cows is a generic term.
Generic term.
There are the drawings. They're lined down, bronze cows.
So they're lined down?
They're lined down.
Then I guess we're not going to know.
That's true.
We will not know.
So anyway, that will be coming. So getting back to the date, if they submit on the 29th, we could potentially look at the September 19th Planning Board meeting or the September 25th Selectmen's meeting.
We could have to tell them. It definitely works.
Okay, all right. Is everybody going to be here?
I'm sure. You guys? No, is it on the line? Well then, please not here for the one.
The outside date would be October 3rd. The Planning Board for Site Plan Review is to open a public hearing within 35 days of submission. And I think October 3rd is the 35th of the decade. So that might be our, we could ask for an extension as we did.
Well, let's see. This is a Site Plan Review, right?
Yes.
So let's see if George can make it. You can't make it on the 29th. No, the August 29th, can you?
Right, I can make it.
Okay.
And then the other one is that we've gotten the draft OSRD application from the chair across folks for the 170 Orchard Street project. They came before us quite some time ago.
Do you remember that project? It's, it's, remember the Fort Yaris?
Yeah.
It's on the other side of the, the road comes in, it's just on the other side of the road.
This is a developer?
Yeah, it's a developer. It's on the old Michael Bulgara's property.
Right, backs up on Shrewson Drive.
Oh, yeah.
Because the yield plan is still showing through road going through one of the parcels on Pearson Drive. So Emily's still a little research to see whether there's actually some, you know, whether they have the right to do that.
Yeah. How many units, how many units are they showing?
14 was the yield, then they added another one.
Down some walls.
Yeah.
Since we have some tightness in our schedule tonight, and it's 7:15, why don't we start then? Okay, in case we have to.
Yeah, let's see if they're here, since the Governors Academy is there.
Are they out there? Oh, yeah. Well, this would be a nice project, I think. Gentlemen.
Good evening.
Not sure to what extent you have additional information to present to us. I thought we were talking about some materials or something like that. Ah, the material girl. I'm sorry. I'll give it away. So I... Yeah, I think it's in your court for the time being. We've got a decision that we're looking at that I think you've seen, and you've gotten back, and so we'd like to tie it up tonight if we can.
That'd be great.
You know, so...
So I think you need to open the town.
So, thank you very much. So, so this is the Parker River Environmental Studies Building 313, Newbury Turnpike, Byfield, Mass, applicant to Governors Academy, 1 Elm Street, Byfield, Mass. And I'm opening up, reopening and continuing this public hearing that we began back in June, if I'm not mistaken, June 6th. And so with that, I turn it over to the applicant to update us with information that they had since we last met.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. Mark Bowdre from Rainy Associates. One second to mute my phone. And the, again, Tom Whither from Governors Academy, and Bessie from Landsberg. And so the, a couple of things that came out of the last meeting that we had in July was that the Board had asked to see building materials that were, you know, proposed to be utilized for the building itself. And Bessie has brought those along, and we'd be happy to show you some samples of what has been, you know, they're thinking about for materials and, you know, understanding that they haven't really gotten into design development yet and all that stuff. So, you know, it's, these are just some ideas at this point.
And that's fine. We understand, but one of our criteria is that the new building is in harmony with the natural environment and is not a negative impact on the surround. So in order for us to do that, the more information we can have right now, that enables us to make that decision.
And Bessie has also, you know, tweaked the, the, the perspective views from manage points that, you know, we were looking at last time. And so we could, we could talk about those a little bit. And the, and the decision has been drafted, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for, Mark, for sharing that with us. We had an opportunity to look at it and offer a couple thoughts on it and that we can talk about. And then the, you know, I think the last, the last thing that we talked about last time was that to share some of the information from the last meeting with, with, you know, Conservation, which Martha did in a informal way. We've definitely not resubmitted to Conservation at this point because, you know, we do have, you know, order conditions on that with, you know, definitely an understanding, just to be clear, that we, we have to go back to the Conservation Commission for the doc. And as you know, that will decide, is not part of this, this filing at this time, nor was it part of the filing with the, with the Conservation Commission other than to just be aware of it. And the, and then also, as would absolutely be appropriate, is after, you know, going through a design development process and, you know, seeing what other, you know, tweaks there might be in the jurisdictional areas to, you know, bring that back before the Conservation Commission for final review. And, which is actually required as condition of that or, or conditions anyway. So we, you know, we, you know, we didn't hear back from Doug or, you know, with any, you know, red flags or anything like that. So I think, as Martha can speak to, you know, it was kind of seen as more of like some, you know, fleshing things out and some minor tweaking to make the plants consistent with the cows and those types of things. So it was, it was no, no real, you know, substantial changes in, to anything that the Conservation Commission had reviewed. So I think, you know, I think we're definitely in good shape there. And with, as you had already mentioned, Mr. Chairman, you know, our goal obviously as well being to have the hearing closed tonight and hopefully a decision rendered so Governors Academy can feel comfortable moving forward and with next step being to get a construction manager on board that would have some input into, you know, some of the, you know, the design development as well as the, some of the other things that we've talked about in the last meeting that are going to be condition, appropriate conditions of approval. And then, you know, start, start moving down that road with, you know, the goal being to get something under construction in, you know, you know, potentially later 2019, you know, maybe more realistically early, early 2020. So I know that the, one of the conditions was that the, that we can talk about when we get into it, but a, you know, the permit would, would last for two years to the point of starting construction, which we think would be, would be okay with our current schedule, so.
Just a correction, it's to completion.
Oh, to construction completion?
Yeah, that's, that's in our bylaw. So if you know that it's going to, you need an extension, then, you know, at the point that you know and you have a sentence coming, then you can come back in and request an extension of the Site Plan Approval.
All right, fair enough. We'd be very surprised if it's completed by August of 2020.
Yeah, normally folks are more apt to start sooner, after they get approval from us. They could get the building permit. I understand you've got some things you need to put in place. So that gives you a longer timeframe putting the pieces together. We understand that, but you have the ability to adjust it.
Okay.
Administratively, though, you don't, you don't...
No, it comes back before the Board.
Does it?
Yeah, the Board, just like Bill just did for the...
Oh, okay, all right.
So, but you just need to submit a letter with your expected completion date, and then the Board will vote on that and extend the Site Plan Approval.
That sounds great.
And file that with the clerk.
Great, so I think with that, if we hand it over to the floor, over to Bessie, and she can share some materials with you?
Sure. Good evening. If you don't mind, I'll point these here for a moment. And our elevations, which we have taken a little leap of adding some materiality to. So this is the plan that was presented at the last meeting, which is obviously a deviation from the straight bar. Pushing and pulling a few feet here and there. And then we've got some materiality applied. So we're thinking that in the top, we've got stone here on the low bar. And we're thinking that it could be either a greenish gray schist, which is local to Pennsylvania, or a granite. This is actually Chelmsford gray. I think it's Westford, so much more local. And then for the larger forms arching up and over, we were thinking that a zinc coating lumber would be a good product, long-lasting, durable, but also similarly toned to the local ledge. And so...
And so is that, where is that? Is that like, I'm looking at roof or something like that?
So it would be a wall that turns into the roof.
Yeah.
And then on those, on the side elevations, it would be the wall.
So the side really has no conustration?
Correct. Yeah, it's just towards the south.
So the, all right, so the south is this, is that? And so if I'm at the river, I'm looking at that one. And so that is a combination of glass and one of these stones here?
Yes, and then our framing inside, which is parallel with our curtain wall mullions, would be a glue lamp. So we'd have four by eight mullions.
Oh, really?
Similar construction. And then the beams running across supporting this roof would also be glue lamp because they'd be covered to support the roof. And then there was a question about the glass. And we have just some, some ideas. I had mentioned at the last meeting that a lot of times we employ frit to limit transmittable light, both from the, from the exterior and from the interior. So just two ideas. So I didn't have a medium gray frit, which we usually use because if you're on the outside, you actually don't see a medium gray at all.
Yeah, you don't see it.
And then from the inside, it kind of goes away. But the notion would be that down low, you could have clear glass, and then the frit becomes much more present and somewhat more opaque as you go up. So that as you're looking through, you can still see, you can still see sky and see trees and canopy, but it's, it's somewhat restricted.
And your preference would be to have something that would be a medium gray, if you could?
Yes, just because you don't see it at all.
I mean, that fits with this, it fits with your other elements.
And then there are also options that are much more gradient-like, but obviously it's, it's more opaque up at the top. So it's less desirable. But we'll be studying that, definitely keeping in mind. The neighbors' requests. The other, the other tool we often employ is to provide light behind. So as you see here, we've got glass on the backside of each of these four boxes. So here, you're actually looking through and seeing this L-shaped bit of glass. And this entire rear wall is glass. And another, there's another bit of glass back here. So when you have backlit glass, it overpowers any reflection because the, the light from behind prevents the light from the front hitting and reflecting back into your eyes. The, the light from behind is so much brighter than any reflection that you would catch. So we're also keeping glass on both sides in an effort to minimize reflection.
Even though there will be shade on the front side, so to speak. So that will still, that will be the same effect?
Yes, yeah, that's, a lot of times if we take the dust shops, we do it with the lights on so that you don't obliterate. You know, it makes it transparent by having lights on inside. You don't, you don't really see the interior too, reflections.
Interesting.
You're kind of clever.
The stone again is where the, the two big panels right there for the stone.
These, these?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it...
Yes, yes.
Okay, I missed it. I was right, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, so that would be something, something like that, yeah.
So what's your thoughts on that?
Did you say that was schist?
Yes.
Well, my only thought on using something lighter in that location as opposed to something darker is that it, it will stand out as opposed to be recessive, that's all. So when your client, it just seems to me that, I'm not sure if... So that's what the people on the other side of Middle Road would be looking at? Right?
No, that's the, the side facing the entrance.
Yeah, facing school. So this is as you come from, from the campus, this is what the side did see.
Fine.
And then you might catch a small glimpse of it.
Nope, not a problem.
But it's, it's very tucked in.
Not a problem. So the north elevation is what the Middle Road pretty close in?
Yes, yes.
Perfect.
And then, you know, we'll have, we'll have a wood screen underneath. We've got a slab on grade to a certain depth, and then piers.
And where's the entrance? Do I see the door right there?
Which is right here.
Okay.
And then lastly, the view from Middle Road, we updated.
Yeah.
Just to sort of locate it correctly on the site. But these are obviously not perfect.
Got it.
Because they were, yes, from, you know, bullions and...
Well, I really appreciate the work you put into that. That really is very helpful, and it does, because we have these two criteria that are aesthetic judgments, and I think that helps quite a bit. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's great.
I think it's great.
You calling it a frit?
So I'm not sure. Do you guys need to present anything else at this time? Or was that, I think that was it?
I think that was it. Was there anything for me to speak to?
I don't think so.
No, I don't think so. Have you made any further, had any further thoughts on the building challenges that really...
Not really, no. We do have a meeting with the Governors Committee tomorrow, where we'll discuss some of these images, and maybe, maybe that will try to do it. We're interviewing construction managers now for pre-construction services, which will help with the...
Yeah. So it is 7:30. We have a scheduled public hearing for a project out on Plum Island, and we will get to that when we can finish with this, okay? So on the Parker River Environmental Studies Building, I am going to read through our findings. And this is a deliberative, deliberative process on the part of the Board where we basically determine whether the findings, which are required of us for Site Plan Review, have been met. And then we will have conditions with some of which you've had a chance to look at, and I think that we may have some discussions about those with you all, okay?
Yes.
So, findings. In approving the Site Plan Review Application, the Board finds that the proposed project will constitute a suitable development based on conformance with the criteria A through M set forth in 97-9A6. M set forth in 97-9A6, decision criteria of the zoning bylaw as follows. A, the proposed plan, one, is designed to work with the existing topography and will minimize the volume of cut and fill. Everybody agree? Two, will minimize the removal of trees six inch in caliber or larger, except in the area of the building footprint and the related site improvements. The condition has been placed on limit of clearing out for construction. Okay? So I think what I'll do is I'll read through this, unless you disagree, I'll just continue on, okay? Number three, will displace no wetland vegetation. Number four, will provide adequate controls to minimize soil erosion. Number five, will create no air and water pollution. And number six, will not increase traffic congestion. B, the proposed plan does not require removal of any stone walls, and no property boundary walls will be disturbed. C, the proposed plan provides adequate stormwater management and other utilities. D, the proposed driveway extension and parking and turnaround areas will maximize safety for pedestrians and vehicles, both on the site and entering onto the, and aggressing from it. E, adequate access to the structure is provided for fire and emergency service equipment. F, the proposed design of the building will minimize obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. G, due to the siting of the project, parking, storage, and other outdoor service areas will not be visible from the public way and from abutting residences. H, the location of the project, the layout of the site, and the existing trees will minimize intrusion of glare from headlights and from sight lighting on surrounding properties. I, the proposed building is being designed to blend in and with the natural surroundings, and will minimize unreasonable departure from the character, materials, and scale of buildings in the vicinity, as viewed from public ways and places. J, the stormwater management system is designed to prevent contamination of groundwater. K, the appearance of the property will be enhanced by the proposed landscaping and other site improvements. L, conditions regarding hours of operation and lighting have been placed on the proposed use to minimize impact on adequate, on adjacent properties. And then, the proposed project complies with provisions of the Newbury Zoning Code where applicable for educational use. So, I don't know, we're gonna have to vote on those independently, we'll vote on the entire thing along with the conditions, am I right?
Yeah, unless somebody has an exception.
Right, unless you have an exception. Everybody okay with all of these?
Yeah.
Okay. So, conditions of approval. In accordance with 97-9A5, site plan review, approval is granted subject to the following conditions. A, site plan approved by the planning board shall not be construed as approval from any other board, commission, official, or department. The applicant is responsible for obtaining all required approvals and permits for the proposed project. B, approval is contingent on final approval by all other relevant boards, commissions, and agencies of the town. Any approval which imposes conditions inconsistent with this site plan approval shall require a revision of the site plan. A request for such revision must be submitted in writing to the planning board. C, lighting. All sight lighting installed on the property shall be shielded to prevent spillover of the project site, off, did you mean, it is spillover off the project site, and shall be directed away from the properties located across the Parker River. D, construction activity. Hours of construction for tree clearing and grubbing, rock drilling, rock hammering, grading, and other related noise generating site work and earthwork shall be limited to 8:00 AM, 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Hours of construction for other activities shall be 7:00 AM up to 6:00 PM, Mondays through Fridays. There shall be no construction activity on Saturdays or Sundays. E, there will be no blasting on the site. Hydraulic hammers and similar equipment may be used. Abutters and owners of properties located across the Parker River on Middle Road shall be notified at least seven days in advance when rock and ledge removal activities are scheduled to take place. So I suppose we can, because we know we have a comment from you on this, are they okay with the board, they've commented on this, and we'll listen to their, to their relation? Okay, we'll do that.
Regarding ledge removal, or rock removal, we do anticipate rock removal going through what we call the saddle area, which is right here, you know, where you have rock on both sides, we're gonna go up through the middle to the building site, which is on the other side of the rock. Installing these, you know, the utility runs, and doing some of that grading to widen up the area for fire access and whatnot, is gonna require some rock removal. And we, I think it's, we feel strongly that we need to reserve the right to be able to do some rock blasting, because doing all of that ledge removal by hammering is a slow, laborious process that frankly is really annoying to neighbors, and because it's, you hear that tink, 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 like, all day long. And it's, you know, but it's also quite costly, you know, versus going in and doing, going in and just removing the ledges, needing to lay the rock back in that area, and even more importantly, to trenching utilities going up from, you know, the parking area up to the building site. So, all of that, you know, ledge, you know, removal activity with, by blasting operations would be, have to meet all, you know, state and local codes, would have to be, you know, coordinated with fire department, et cetera. There would be pre-blast surveys of, you know, abutting properties, as well as the, you know, governor's academies, you know, properties within a certain distance. And it's something that is frankly very, nowadays blasting operations are, people don't even know what's happening, frankly. And it's, you know, we had a project recently in Malden, that is now, just recently opened, and we had, you know, housing authority properties around us, we had neighboring, you know, abutters houses, we had an elementary school directly behind the property, and that, that work, that was, we did, you know, ledge removal there by blasting means, and it went beautifully. And people were, frankly, didn't even know what was happening. And it's, so we would ask that the, frankly, that the board not pro給it, you know, blasting operations, because we think it's really the way to go here.
So if something does happen, and neighbors across the river have glass broken, are you insured to pay for that?
Certainly, yeah. Well, the contract, contract as well.
So what was the board thinking?
I agree, I don't really see a need for this. What would be most significantly effective would be your own employees and students, and if you can speak for them, I can't imagine a person across the river having much of that.
To second Mark's comments about the jackhammering, it would take weeks, possibly, to do the type of work that is likely required, and blasting, it would be done within a day and a half.
Rachel?
I don't, I don't, there aren't any abutters within 250 feet of them.
Right.
So, no, I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
I guess the only thing, I want to make sure is that you get notice, adequate notice before blasting occurs, because it has the connotation of something, a problem, for most people. And so the properties across the river, and all the other ones that are, I guess, close to you are your properties. Just letting everyone know, was it a week ahead of that, seven days?
Seven days, I think.
Before you, and the times that you're gonna be doing it, and how long it will last. So I think that can be handled administratively. I don't know if we can put enough language in here now that says it's allowed, but, so we can say that what you've asked for seems to make sense, so we can...
They would have to do it consistent with state, regular regulations.
We have to come up with, yeah, with state and federal regulations.
As Mark said, coordinate with the fire chief.
Right. So I'm not sure how we come up with our language in this one.
Don't you need a permit from the fire department to do the blasting? That's where the permit comes from.
No, no, I get, I was thinking about how we put language in for tonight, if we want to get this approved.
Well, I don't know, I think in a previous project, we went through all that's required for blasting, and it was, it was quite a mess.
It is.
It covered everything conceivable. Do we need to say anything?
I think we need to say something and refer to something.
It must be done according to state.
State, local regulations.
Blasting must be done according to state, local, and federal regulations. Leave it at that, and then, and then you work it out with the local commissioner.
I think the school would be willing also to, that, you know, the, abutters, you know, directed abutters and those across the river would be notified.
And maybe if we just take this E here and say, rather than saying there will be no blasting on the site, say that blasting will be allowed.
And then we say hydraulic hammers and silicon may be used.
Yep.
Which is true. Abutters and orders of properties across the road will be notified.
Yeah.
All in accordance, all in accordance with state...
In local regulations.
In accordance with, okay?
Yeah. Perfect.
That's rather elegant. Other federal regulations, too?
I think it's state and local, I'm not sure. I could check with the chief.
Okay. Okay, we're okay with that.
Excellent.
There will no stump grinding on, number F, there will be no stump grinding or tree trunk chipping grinding on the site. All trees cut down for the project, and all tree stumps will be removed from the site. So you've got a position on this as well?
Yeah, just that we'd like to reserve the right to potentially do, not for grinding up all the trees and all that stuff, but possibly to grind some of the stumps like in place. And it's, it'd be a possibility, I understand that it's a noise issue, really, and, but to, you know, possibly getting on the slope and doing, you know, the tree removal of certain trees in here might be, you know, less impactful to the slope area to grind them in place, instead of grubbing all the stumps out and hauling them out of there. It's, and, you know, it could generate some natural wood chips possibly for use on the property somewhere, it's just something we just want to reserve the right for, to potentially grind some of the stumps.
How many trees potentially do you think would have to be grinded?
Oh, it's, I think we had said last time, you know, we actually marked on the, on the plan, the various trees that were, we anticipated being removed, and it was, you know, trying to remember, maybe 30 trees or something like that?
Thirty-three in the footprint, there were 14 between the, between the parking and the other.
And what was the footprint of the building you would remove?
Oh, that's right, 33, that's the number I was remembering, in the building area. And then we had marked out with X's the trees that we thought, you know, maybe another, we, 14 trees here we anticipated, about 32 going down to the pathway, so, you know, whatever, that's 65, 75, you know, 80, 79, 80 trees, so. But some of those are small, you know, are, and a lot of them would be, because in the building footprint area, that are probably gonna be grubbed out anyway, as they're, as they're working out the building footprint area. So, you know, we, maybe half of the trees maybe might be, might be ground possibly, but, and again, we would have to talk to the, you know, construction managers, site contract, to see if it's even feasible or desirable for them to do that. It's, but, and, you know, we didn't, didn't get into any kind of detailed discussions like that with conservation, it was more just talking about the, you know, identifying which trees we anticipated having to be removed, so.
From, I think, from my perspective, grinding would be less disruptive to the site, obviously. And I think grinding is not so much of a nuisance, a noise nuisance, as chipping. So I mean, if you could straighten the ch, the grinding from it, and keep it...
Is that right? Is that your experience?
That's my experience, yeah, yeah.
The first worst noise is the saw cutting down.
That's true.
Then you get to the chipping, and then you get to the grinding.
Yeah, the grinding is loud, but not, not as loud as the chipping.
I think a lot of times they bring in one of these big tub grinders, and they're just putting everything into it, and it, yeah, it can be loud.
It's really loud.
Yep. But I think we're talking about, you know, possibly grinding the stumps in place.
Yeah, yeah. Which, that would be, yeah, the reason to do it would be to not disrupt the soil and cause runoff and...
And I, you know, I know, that's what you discussed earlier, Deb was concerned about rubbing the stumps in the wetland area on another project. So I don't know if this is something you might consider discussing with the Conservation Commission, to see if they had preference for one or the other in certain areas.
Could the condition be worded by the board to, you know, subject to review by the, by the Conservation Commission?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Well, and also, the closer you get to your actual work, when you know more about what you're gonna do, and then meeting with both the building commissioner and town planner, and we'll leave it administratively to them, okay?
I think there was a pre-construction meeting.
Right. And figure it out then.
Sure.
And we'll leave it in there as a possible thing for stump grinding, but not chipping?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Not chipping?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so how do we word that?
Stump grinding is permitted. Stump grinding...
So there will be, there will be no...
Pending review by the Conservation Commission, review and input from the Conservation Commission law, and what else? And discussions with administrative staff at the first construction meeting, something like that. We're gonna keep it in there as a right. All trees, but you are gonna remove all the trees?
Yes. You know, Bessie was just saying that the, that this possibility that some of the trees might be milled and brought back to the site is lumber, dimensional lumber for various uses, but I think that's not what you're talking about.
You're not, you're not gonna put a saw in there?
No.
Okay. I think we have some of this language, I don't know, maybe you...
I wouldn't, I would not anticipate that.
So...
That's a good question, yeah.
Pending CONCOM review, which, stump grinding, grinding is permitted, or maybe permitted, I'm just saying?
Oh, yeah.
What do you think? Is there?
Maybe permitted.
Maybe, because we don't know.
Yeah, we don't know.
Okay, so...
May some mention on the pre-construction meeting.
Pending CONCOM review, stump grinding, maybe permitted. All trees cut down for the project will be removed. Then we need something to... We assume we're gonna have a pre-construction meeting, and they'll handle it there.
Yeah.
All right? We've got it in there. All right, moving on. Item G, the vehicle turnaround area off the driveway shall be kept clear of snow in the winter and remain unobstructed year round for fire apparatus turning and staging. A fire hydrant shall be installed within 50 feet of the building. Final location of the hydrant shall be coordinated with Newbury Fire Chief. I, all responsible effort shall be made to maintain as many existing mature trees within the project area as possible. The limit of clearing around the various site improvements shall be shown on the plan and submitted to the town planner for administrator review and approval when the contractor is added to the project team, and site clearing will be carefully monitored during construction. J, pre-construction meeting with the town planner, the town planning board's engineering consultant, and the conservation agent shall be held prior to the commencement of site work to address anticipated tree clearing and stump removal activity. So I think that kind of qualifies. The limit of work shall be clearly stated prior to the preparation, pre-construction conference. K, the applicant shall provide the town planner with a detailed construction schedule at or before the pre-construction conference, and shall notify the planner of any changes to the schedule as site work and construction proceed. L, a stabilized construction entrance shall be included as part of the required stormwater pollution... L, a stabilized construction entrance shall be included as part of the required stormwater pollution prevention plan to be prepared as part of the construction documents for the project and shall be depicted and detailed on the construction drawings. M, the material and equipment storage area shall be included in the SWPP for the project as part of the construction documentation. Final location will be determined with input from the selected contractor and shall be shown on the construction plans. N, a confirmatory test pit shall be conducted and proposed upon 2P at the time of or prior to construction and basin adjustment, and basin adjustment made if necessary. I just want to make sure, we did discuss that with you guys, right?
Yeah.
All right. O, specific information regarding plantings and site lighting shall be provided to the town planner for administrator review and approval when final selections have been made of the construction documentation. Landscape P, landscape improvements along the drive shown as Plan C1, overall site plan as future, will be planted and completed no later than now. So this is something that you talked about, right?
Right. And this goal is, feels that that could be done within one year of substantial completion of the, of the project.
I think that's reasonable. You think that's reasonable, Martha? Okay, we'll put that in. So we'll just say completed within one year.
Of substantial completion.
Got it. Q, the design of the proposed future dock and pumping system shall be submitted to the planning board for review and approval when finalized. So we haven't discussed this among ourselves and I know that you want it to be a modification and I think that we need to, among ourselves, just have a discussion. It's certainly part of the project, but certainly very different than the rest of the project. And it's really, a modification typically means that whatever you had before is being changed. The problem here is that the dock has nothing to do with what we've, it's not there. So it's not really a modification in the true sense of the word. And so that's why I had a problem with the word modification.
It is shown in the plan though, is, you know, in the overall plan as, you know, for reference purposes, so.
But it's not an official part of the application, that's the problem.
That is true.
If it were, then it could be considered a modification in my mind, but it's just not. And so it's not a modification, it's something different. Now, what is the difference procedurally?
Procedurally, it's essentially the same. I think if, well, if the board determined that it was a major modification, if that's the way it went, it would require a public hearing. If it's a new application, it requires a public hearing, so the end result's kind of the same.
Of course, you would want it to be a minor modifications, you don't need another public hearing, but your timeline isn't going to be hurt by it anyway, I mean, based on what I hear.
Also, I get the sense it could be potentially more controversial than the rest of the project.
Right.
Other rules to get through. Yeah, in each case, which is an argument I think for you and so.
Yeah.
My impression was that it should be.
Yeah, okay. So I think we think it's going to do it. Okay.
And how are you, how are you handling, planning to handle this CONCOM? Would it be an amended NOI or would it be?
No, it would be a new NOI.
Okay, so if it's a new NOI, then I think it makes sense for it to be settled now.
Right, thank you. R, from time to time, the planning board or its agents or representatives may enter and inspect the premises subject to this decision excluding the buildings on site to assure that any work done on the site is in conformity with the approved site plan. And if not, to take any action the planning board deems appropriate to encourage compliance in all respects. Excuse me, and to enforce compliance if necessary, all in the sole discretion of the planning board. S, at the discretion of the building commissioner with the concurrence of the planning board, recording or certification of the town, certification of the town clerk and a decision of the site plan review at the Southern Essex Registry of Deans may be included as an additional condition precedent to the issuance of any building project. Modifications, any modification to the approved site plan will require planning board approval. Requests for modification shall be submitted to the board in writing and shall in most cases be subject to the same submittal, review, and hearing procedures as the original filing. U, duration of approval, site plan approval for this project shall last after two years from the date of issuance, not including time required to pursue, to pursue the, or wait, or await determination of an appeal referred to in GL Chapter forty-eight, Paragraphs eight and seventeen. Unless approved, construction work shall have commenced, unless approved, construction work shall have commenced and proceeded in good faith continuously to completion except for good cause. In such case, a request for extension of date of completion shall be submitted in writing to the planning board. So, any comment from board members on these decisions, well, on these conditions? Anything further? Anything further from you guys?
I think you covered most of them.
So, I think.
Any more, I just have a clarification probably more for us than you. Any modification, so it means that the footprint changes or the location of the building changes or anything like that, it comes back to us or.
Something.
And if it's minor, then. It's easier if they decide to put the building on the site.
Okay, so we're ready to.
I guess the question is, I, we're still kind of looking at the wording on some of these. I guess there are two options, one would be to try to finalize that wording. I mean, I think that the public hearing can be closed either way.
Approve, approve the, the only things that are changing here are the language and the conditions as discussed in the meeting and as will be finalized by the town planner.
You should really go on to find the language, so one possibility would be to actually finalize that modification by the next meeting.
So we could sign it earlier. Can we sign it later?
Hold on, hold on. We could do that. But just to. Well, I was just writing.
I think I've got it for you guys, for you before you actually put your names to it.
Okay. Well, all right, since I can't find exactly what I was just writing on. It's not what I wrote. I know.
Excuse me, Martha, just one, one thing on the, item E on the document submitted. You mentioned the conceptual views, dated July eleventh, I don't know if we want to say as revised August fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay, so we can close, all right, what we're going to do is vote to close the public hearing. And then based on that, then we can just simply direct Martha to finalize the language to be prepared for the next meeting. You don't need to make any further, no presentations will be allowed. We're just really finalizing the language and it should be a sound doc, okay? So let me have some.
I will, we close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so it's closed. And now, secondly, we need a directive from Martha to prepare a final decision on the Park River environmental project.
I would direct town planner to draw up appropriate language reflecting our discussion on the conditions that are pending.
Okay. And based on the changes that we have made and agreed to as a board. You said that, as amended, thank you. Okay, a second, you second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay, we're done. Thank you very much. Hopefully this is not, I think this is fun. Thank you for your materials.
Next meeting would be what?
Twenty, twenty-ninth probably.
Twenty-ninth, it's going to be a busy night.
But, but, I don't see it as, I mean, it'll just be a very quick, because we don't have to go through all these items again, we just have to vote.
Right.
So.
And since the public hearing is closed at this point, we can't take any further.
Can't take any further comment. So it's really just a.
I'll be here and.
It's a vote, yeah, I, my guess is, just Tom needs to be here, that's all, all right? Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Yep. I did have a question though, when did Flensburg become just Flensburg? Really? I thought it was a mistake in what Martha had written out, thought you forgot.
Earl?
Of course. You're still impressed by it.
Yes.
You actually Googled it.
I had to Google it.
Wow. You're still getting.
It is just one word.
We're still actually Flensburg architects, but.
But nothing came up on Google, it just said Flensburg.
Other branding which is hard to.
Yep, there it is, fewer, other words to fit.
Okay, well, good, thanks, Martha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a great night.
Thanks, you too.
Oh, thank you for your patience. You've been here since seven o'clock. Okay. So, this is the. Oh, by the way, before I do this, why don't I just give you my notes that I have on this? That's eligible. And so I'd like to reopen the public hearing for the Alga Way gravel staging and access area, Alga Way and Fort Towne Parcels, Palm Island, Newbury, Massachusetts, applicant, the town of Newbury. So, we have. This is the final one here than I had, the ones that I had read before. So again, this can get a little bit boring for, but we do have to read through all of this.
Do you want to ask for any additional information?
Yeah.
Should we open the meeting?
I did.
I think you did.
Oh.
Did I understand? I think so.
Do you have anything further you want to bring forward at this point?
We had a couple of, I'm going to call them minor doouts from the last public hearing and one was to, and we worked with Martha to make sure that any chain link fence that we were adding was going to have the nice black coating to mute itself in the background. And I think we're going to work that into the approval. And then the second was, we worked with the DPW and came up with having an operation named as plan for the yard itself, not the stormwater system, that was previously done with the Conservation Commission. And met with him and discussed it with him a few times and came up with hours of operation, eight to four. And Monday through Friday, with the exception of if there's any kind of emergency storm event, anything like that, where they need to access the yard for emergency purposes, that they may operate it outside those times, under those circumstances. And then it also lays out that they'll be storing, stockpiling maybe drainage pipe or new sewer pipe for any projects in town that, in the area that might be going on. A drainage structure that may need to be repaired, they could store something like that on the site, you know, during the construction project. If there's immediate debris removal on any of those storm events, they could be temporarily stored here and then not long-term stored, but removed as soon as possible after an emergency event. And then again, the type of materials that have always been stored there would continue to be, you know, get, after quite a few discussions of the DPW, they're really going to use it the same way they've been using it. No change in use, it's more of a formal layout of the footprint, putting in the guard rail, really establishing the limits of where they're going to place the material. But, you know, he's going to really be using this exactly the way he's been using it for quite a while.
The thing is though, that the town is putting some money in to kind of make it a little better looking.
Yeah, absolutely.
For better or worse.
Yeah.
And in your O and M, do you have information in there about maintenance of the facility over time? And who cuts, who weeds, who does this, who does that?
I mean, no, the O and M doesn't talk about mowing, we're not planting any, we're actually for, we're not allowed to put any lumen or seed down, so we don't anticipate any typical kind of daily maintenance of it. The old, the stormwater management plan does talk about, as the soils fill, will obviously be maintained. There's some discussion of, you know, the plantings will be, you know, watched over time, but that's really all that's out here. And then the gravel areas are going to generally have gravel stored on them, so I don't think there's going to be like courses of new gravel that have to come in for the site, which is going to be generally, you know, the materials out there would be.
Well, if you're going to have grass, you're going to have weeds, who's going to pull the weeds?
Dune grass, no, there's no lumen, typical lawn type grass, it's just, you know, the sparse dune grass plantings. They would just be allowed to go natural, there'd be no manicuring of it.
And what about, okay. What about litter? Who picks up litter?
Yeah, I mean, general site maintenance, all the town's responsibility.
Well, I think we need to have that in the O and M plan. That DPW is responsible. By the way, there's a great article, did you see the rail trail?
Yep.
I mean, the weed clear? And they can't, they can't clear the weeds until DOT gives its final approval or something like that? In the meantime, the weeds are like the sun. So, having seen that, that's what made you think about it? Well, I mean, so, what's your sense? You saw the O and M plan, do you think it's adequate?
Well, the last one that I received was actually in your packets, which was basically just the one page. Is there any, because I talked with James this morning, is there any update on that?
No, just that the hours were revised to eight to four. And, you know, that we have no objection to adding a statement that, you know, any, you know, ongoing maintenance needed to keep the site in good, in cleverly fashion and certainly if there's issues with the, you know, any of the facility being installed, that will repair it. That's not a problem, that's.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think it might be good to put it in there. Some of the residents were expressing some, you know, some concern about it, so.
Yeah, that's no problem, we can revise to reflect that.
What were the other things that they were mentioning?
I think it was, I mean, they were, they were kind of concerned about the comings and goings and hours and.
Right. Of course, this is six AM to four PM, this is now eight AM, right?
It's now eight AM, yeah.
And I think that's reasonable. Well, I think that the whole idea here is to have, DPW owns the site, or the town owns the site. DPW manages it for us. And James is certainly a good manager, but I'm just, you know, aware that he's got a facility with how many homes surround it, I mean, that's the whole idea, is to be sensitive to that.
Right, I mean, probably what, nine homes around it?
Yeah, that sounds right.
I mean, that's, I'd like to see something in the O and M that acknowledges, that talks about the fact that it's there.
Site maintenance.
Yeah. I think it needs to work, honestly, but I, I'm not going to hold, I don't think we should hold the project up, but I think maybe you can do that administratively with Martha, just work at it.
Sure. Sure.
Okay. Anything else? Nothing else, yeah, okay. Can I say, can I say, we have that on the O and M?
Same. As long as you wish things are laid out in the future.
Yeah. Well, with that then, I will read through decision criteria. So regarding Alga Way, in approving the site plan review application, the board finds that the proposed project constitutes suitable development based on conformance with the criteria A through N set forth in ninety-seven dash nine A six, decision criteria of the zoning bylaw as follows. A, the proposed plan one, will minimize the volume of cut and fill. Both grading plan closely matches the high and low points on the site. The total net volume is a cut of approximately fifty cubic yards excluding the existing material storage files. Two, will remove no existing trees. Three, will displace no vegetated wetland or wetland vegetation. Four, will provide adequate controls to minimize soil erosion. Soil erosion is mitigated by applying the Massachusetts stormwater policy to the greatest extent practical for the redevelopment and by planting approximately forty-five hundred and fifty square feet of doom grass in areas of existing gravel fill. Five, it will create no air and water pollution, the proposed use is consistent with the existing use of the property. Number six, will not increase traffic congestion, there will be no change in the use of the property. B, the proposed plan does not require removal of any stone walls and no property boundary walls will be disturbed. C, proposed plan provides adequate stormwater management and other utilities. Stormwater management system includes the installation of sand treatment swales where appropriate to collect and treat stormwater runoff. D, proposed design will maximize safety for pedestrians and vehicles, both on the site and entering into the, onto the egressing from it. The addition of one-way signage in the area of the pump station for both ingress and egress will help improve traffic flow and safety for both pedestrians and vehicles. E, adequate access to the existing pump station is provided for fire and emergency service equipment. F, the proposed project will not obstruct any scenic views from publicly accessible locations. The site lies within an existing low area where much of the surrounding property is higher in elevation. G, visual intrusion will be minimized. Much of the property is not easily accessed, visible, from the existing Alga Way right-of-way, and the proposed redevelopment will improve the view of the site from budding residences. H, intrusion of glare from headlights on surrounding properties will be minimized and no sight lighting is proposed. Since much of the existing property is lower in elevation than the surrounding residential properties, headlight glare on those properties will be minimal. Further, no increase in traffic due to the project is anticipated. I, not applicable. J, the stormwater management system is designed to prevent contamination of groundwater. The order of conditions for project includes a long-term pollution prevention plan for the site. So that was given back in February, is that right?
The order of conditions was issued on February fifth, I think, of this year.
And was also, and, and that included the LTPP, right?
Right, which was dated prior, and this project actually came before the CONCON.
Which was near, it was close to it.
Really? Okay, I'm just curious on the timeline. K, the appearance of the property will be enhanced by the proposed doom grass planting and doom restoration, guardrail installation, and proposed grading. L, impact of the use on adjacent properties will be minimal. Planned operations will be consistent with an operations and management plan to be submitted and approved. So we'll just keep that language, to be submitted and approved, and so you'll work on it, okay? M, the proposed project complies with the provisions of the Newbury zoning code bylaw. Including parking and signs, traffic control signage will be compliant with the manual for uniform traffic control devices and include stop signs and one-way signs, no parking is proposed. All right. No, do we have any comments on any of those? Are you okay with all of those? That we just read?
Yes, we have no objection. And that long-term pollution prevention plan did have a lot of, like, I'm gonna call them good housekeeping topics about keeping cycling, so a lot of what we're looking for may already be something that we've worked out, so we can go through that document together. Not anything we think is missing.
Okay.
Conditions of approval, in accordance with paragraph ninety-seven dash nine A five, site plan review approval is granted, subject to the following conditions. A, site plan approval by the planning board shall not be construed as approval by any other board, commission, official, or department. The applicant is responsible for obtaining all required approvals and permits for the proposed project. B, approval is contingent on final approval by all other relevant boards, commissions, and agencies of the town. Any approval which imposes conditions inconsistent with this site plan approval shall require a revision to the site plan. A request for such revision must be submitted in writing to the planning. Construction activity, hours of operation and hours of construction, rather, for grading and other related noise generating site work and earthwork, shall be limited to eight AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, hours of construction for other activities shall be seven AM to six PM, Monday through Friday. There shall be no construction activity on Saturdays and Sundays.
Have you had any discussion with, I mean, I know...
The DPW is intended to do this, so, but that's, that's their normal hours.
That's their hours?
Yeah.
Okay. Hours of operation. What are they? Eight to four, okay, good.
Except during emergencies.
Okay, hours of operation of eight to four, except, eh, as in operation plan except for... Okay. The pre-construction meeting with the town planner, planning board's engineering consultant, and the conservation agent shall be held required for commitment of cycle. F, the applicant shall provide the town planner with the detailed construction schedule at or before the pre-construction conference and shall notify the planner of any changes to the schedule at site work and construction proceeds.
Can we actually go back to E? We haven't had Joe involved in this, so I'm not sure that he would need to be at a pre-construction conference.
True call. True call.
And I think he could be called in if, if needed, but I think that it's a simple enough project. It's probably, I don't know.
I mean, really, um, if you, then I, I can strike it.
As needed, or as needed?
Save a couple of bucks with the town planner and the conservation agent, okay?
So that would really be Jim meeting with us, James meeting with us.
Right, okay. G, from time to time, the planning board or its agents or representatives may enter and inspect the premises subject to this decision to assure that any work done on the site is in conformity with the approved site plan, and if not, take any action the planning board deems appropriate to encourage compliance in all respects and to enforce compliance if necessary, all in the sole discretion of the planning board. H, the proposed chain link fencing at Newgate will be black vinyl coated. At the discretion of the building commissioner, with the concurrence of the planning board, recording of a certification, certification of the town clerk and the decision of the site plan review at the Southern Essex Registry of Deeds may be included as an additional condition precedent to the issuance of any building permit. J, modifications, any modification to the approved site plan will require planning board approval. Requests for modifications shall be submitted to the board in writing and shall in most cases be subject to the same submittal review and hearing procedure as was the original filing. Duration of approval, site plan approval for this project shall lapse after two years from the date of issuance, not including time required to pursue or await determination of an appeal referred to in general law, chapter forty-eight, paragraphs eight and seventeen, unless approved construction work shall have commenced and proceeded in good faith continuously to completion except for good cause. In such case, a request for extension of the date of completion shall be submitted in writing to the planning board. So those are all the findings and the conditions.
I have one question about the last condition. We've been asked to kind of phase the construction of this as needed, so if, let's say, a project comes up and he needs maybe half or a little more than half of it, and they construct that, and then there's a pause, so it's not a continuous construction phase. Does that, does that cause a conflict with the last condition, maybe, just right?
I don't think so, I mean, the language of the decision actually notes that it will be, probably be staged, that that was part of the order of conditions, and I think that if it's gonna be more than two years, you know, James would just need to come before us with a letter requesting extension.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not... But, but yes, he would have to do something. Okay. Okay, is there any reason that we should not close this first? Do you want to close it? Any reason, any thoughts to keep it open? No?
Indeed, to keep it open.
Then let's have a...
I move that we close the public hearing of this matter.
Second, please.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so it's now closed, and I think that we can vote on this. Do you need to make any other changes in this? I don't think so. Because it's included in here, the one change we had was the O and M, and it stands okay, I think, it says it'll be submitted.
Right, right. That's not actually written as a condition, it's in the findings, so, but I could carry that down to... I could add, I can...
It's, um...
It was in number L under findings.
Okay. That's okay, can we submit that? No, it is, it should be a condition.
It should be, so I could, I could just, I can add that.
Are you okay with doing that and us voting on it?
Yeah, voting on it as, as amended.
As amended.
Just need to clean it up and add some dates and go and do that, something.
Okay, then let's have a motion to vote, vote on the Alga Way project findings and conditions of approval.
So would the I move that we approved the site plan review for the Alga Way gravel staging and access area as amended in this meeting?
Second, any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, done. Done. Thank you, thank you for your patience again.
So what I'll do is, is I'll make the revisions and let you know when we can be signed.
Good. So, you were right in the middle of discussing something when I cut you off.
Oh, we were talking about the, the tearing across.
Yeah.
Starting to talk about the, oh, I'm sorry. I don't know how much else I was gonna say about that right now.
But you think they'll be in?
Well, they're aiming, they would like to submit on the twenty-ninth. It seems like we've got some, some work to do, actually, before it meets our application requirements.
Did they have a discussion with you at all about what's taken them the year?
No, we know all of a sudden Jeffrey Roloff's is their attorney, and all of a sudden he showed up with the application and nine copies of it, and we wrote a check, ready to submit, and I said, no, 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 that's not the way we do it. So he left one copy with me for review, but he didn't discuss anything about why it's taken so long.
As I recall, these were not, not be categorized as affordable.
No.
Pretty...
Well...
Five, six hundred?
Yeah, I mean, not as much as the proposed Coleman Road ones, but still.
But, they're, they're at the average price of a Newbury property, which makes them a lot different than everything else that's being built.
Yeah. And we can't insist on, anyway, on that.
No, the board could certainly have a discussion.
We can have a discussion with them about doing some inclusionary units. They can have that, they can say no. But we can have that discussion, I think that we should have that discussion.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a small number of units, you'd only get, if we had a law, you'd get two. With, you know, ten percent, because then it rounds up on the one point four one. But, so let's see what happens. I mean, I'm kind of excited, we haven't had a decent size subdivision in quite some time. What about Coleman?
I haven't heard anything else from Woody Camm since he came and presented with us.
Okay. So in terms of liaison reports, do you have everything, I mean, we met with the selectmen last night.
All right.
And you gave us the thing about the, the green, and that came from the selectmen's meeting?
Ah, that came from the selectmen's meeting, and the other thing, on next, their next meeting on the twenty-eighth, there will be discussion about our building project. Because the, you know, the schematic cost estimates have come in quite a bit higher than what was appropriated. And once the architects really started looking at the program and vetting it, there's more progress as well, so the architect has been directed to look at two things, one, doing a project for the amount of money that was appropriated plus escalation, since we're now looking at it a couple of years later. And the other is to look at doing a combined police and town hall building for that amount of money plus escalation, so that's gonna be discussed on the twenty-eighth.
Should be interesting.
We're kind of untold right now. And the selectmen did approve a ballot, some ballot language to go on the November ballot for, it was new override language. We'll see what happens.
Town of Merrimack is bringing forward a eight, eight thousand square foot police station for six point five, right?
Although I did notice that as far as I can tell, they don't have the OPM, they're looking for designs services first. They don't have the architect and, and...
Joe, what did the Rowley facility cost?
I don't know that much, but I don't...
That looks substantial, doesn't it?
Well, the one that's biggest, of course, is Salisbury.
Salisbury's done all kinds of work with their public buildings.
Yeah. Their library is terrific.
Beautiful.
Just terrific. But I have not really seen the police station, I don't think, I know, I know, I saw it under construction, but I haven't seen it finished.
Yeah, I mean, it's sizable, the finishes, we took a tour of it, and it's, you know, there's nothing extravagant about it, it's very, you know, it's, it's modest, functional layout and modest, functional finishes. They've got more size, I think they've got seven cells, because they're doing a different population.
Yeah.
And things like that, they had to go up, because of the wetlands, they had to minimize the footprint and go up, so the third story attic space is partially, it's not finished except for the cat and those spaces, but it has potential for expansion if they need it.
Did they get any supplemental funds from the state?
I don't know how they funded it.
Why do I think that they did? Anyway, makes no difference, but well, we got some issues here, so hopefully we can resolve them. Any, anything from CONCON that we haven't heard?
No, I got the, my notes from our most recent meeting, there's really nothing too exciting.
Nothing too exciting? And Merrimack Valley Planning Commission has not met, they will meet again in September. And I'm a third, have you heard anything recently from them, aside from the work that we're doing with Gerard for the mapping? And the HPP was approved.
Right, the HPP was approved. And Tony's been working on a parking plan for the Byfield area. That's been a little on again, off again, but he's, um, gonna be meeting with Tracy and me.
Oh, good.
Wanted to do it next week, but since I'll be out, try it with the doctor.
You mean parking, like an off-street parking plan? Or an on-street parking plan?
On-stri, well, I think on-street.
To rationalize?
Rationalize parking. He's been studying.
Yeah, it's just a mess. Especially at the post office. Well, that's good. Anything else for the, for the order? Martha, anything else?
Can't think of anything. I'd kind of want to hear a discussion of zoning, but I haven't had a chance to look at anything since we last...
No, I think that we have to get these things we're working on out of the way, and then we can maybe get back in and look at the noise ordinance and finish up the master plan stuff. We're waiting to get some information from our consultant about how much it's gonna cost for her to finish it up. And hopefully we can get that done in early fall. Would be nice. Okay. Let's maybe have a motion to adjourn.
What would we adjourn?
Second.
I've been waiting for that second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.